Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call this meeting to order. The time is 7:30. This is the regular council meeting for September 9th. Clerk, can you please do a roll call?
Mayor Forten, please.
I'm here.
Councilman Fleming? Councilman Muir?
Here.
Councilor Rohrbach?
Here.
Councilman Soltis?
Here.
Councilor Wright?
Here.
Mayor Grafstein?
I am here. Can I please have a motion to excuse Councilman Fleming? He did give notice.
Your Honor, so moved.
Thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor?
Yes.
Support.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, those against say no. Councilman Fleming has been excused. The invocation and pledge this evening will be led by Councilor Rohrbach. I invite you to stand if you would like.
So with the start of the school year underway, I want to take this opportunity to acknowledge and uplift the children and families who are embarking on a new school year with the possibilities and all the goodness that can come with that. May you all have a powerful year of learning, growing, and connecting with community. May you be safe, protected, and cared for, so you are free to learn and grow. I also take this time to ask for a moment of silence for the lives lost to gun violence in the first days of the school year. Lives cut short because gun violence is the number-one killer of children in this country. I call upon our legislators at the federal and state level to take action to protect our children. Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. First up this evening, we have approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or deletions?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to add as 4 dot A, a presentation recognizing September 8th through the 14th is National Suicide Prevention Week.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor?
Yes.
All support.
Thank you. Motion has been made. And seconded, is there any discussion? All right, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. Motion carries. Can you hear us now? Okay, they're on. Okay. We will... Just give us a second. I'll get that taken care of. Are there any other additions or deletions this evening? All right, thank you. Okay, then we will move on to presentations. All right, perfect. So the first presentation this evening is a resolution recognizing September 17th to the 23rd as Constitution Week. So whereas September 17th marks the 237th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas the United States Constitution establishes the rule of law and power as well as the limits of government while enabling us to choose those who will govern, and whereas it also implies the responsibility of its citizens to understand it and to support it, and whereas it is the oldest written instrument of democratic rule in the world still in use, inspiring many to come here and contribute to the nation that created it, and whereas it is fitting improper to accord official recognition of this seminal document and its memorable anniversary and the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion, and whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore, the City Council does hereby resolve that the week of September 17th to 23rd, 2024, is Constitution Week in City of Madison Heights, and asks that our citizens to reaffirm the ideals of the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties, remembering that lost rights may never be regained. And here to receive this today, Amelia Hofer?
Thank you, Mayor Grafstein and City Council members. I'm Amelia Hofer, a board member of the Ezra Parker Chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution, as well as a proud resident of Madison Heights. More than a million women have joined the DAR since its founding in 1890. Today, nearly 200,000 members advance our missions of education, historic preservation, and patriotism. Last year, members around the world gave 7 million volunteer hours in service to our communities. The DAR has promoted Constitution Weeks since President Dwight Eisenhower signed it into law in 1956. We thank the City of Madison Heights for your support. Right now, there may be a woman watching this meeting who knows that her ancestors supported the cause for independence. We encourage her to visit dar.org to learn how she might join us. Thank you.
Thank you. And can I give you the proclamation? All right, next up, we have from the Director of Public Services, the 2024 Summer Beautification Awards.
So good evening, Mayor Grafstein, Member of Council. I'm here tonight on behalf of the Beautification Committee to present the 2024 Summer Beautification Awards. As always, we were presented with some incredible nominations, and further, when we were out on our drive the morning of July 16th, came across many additionally spectacular homes and businesses throughout the city. So the same very good problem they have every year is that coming up with a winner is a very hard decision when you have so many people who put care and effort into the upkeep and beautification of their homes. So in the end, it all comes down to the final aggregate scoring from the committee, and this year, it's my pleasure to introduce our first-place winner, Sabak Hedo of 30749 Blair Moore. I don't believe you're here. This is one of those gardens where the longer you look, the more there is to see. It's full of beautiful flowers and a variety of art and knickknacks, but it's not clutter overpowered. It's just the longer you look, there's little water features, little birdhouses, all sorts of things. A gift certificate to Charlie's Restaurant, as well as a certificate of appreciation for our mayor and council will be forthcoming. Now, in a very close second place, may I present Chris Howlett of 28226 Cousins. Is she here tonight?
Yes.
Welcome. Now, these gardens have a slight nautical influence with the flower-lined paver pathway serving as a centerpiece to a spectacular and vibrant mix of perennials, annuals, and shrubs. By way of our congratulations and thank you, may I present you with a gift certificate to Mia's Bakery and Coffee Shop and a certificate of appreciation from City Council. And now we have a brief presentation of all the 2024 winners and nominees. I've been put in charge of the volumes, so bear with me. And we have no volume. So again, I'd like to thank everyone who participated in the 2024 Beautification Awards and our countless residents who take that extra time and care to keep the neighborhoods and city looking great. The Beautification Committee is going to be out in December looking at holiday lights and decorations, so please be sure to send those nominations into the DPS. And congratulations again to our winners, and thank you all very much.
Next up, we have, also from the Director of Public Services, the 2024 National Senior Center Month Proclamation. So I'm going to read this, and then Mr. Valentine, if you want this, or Mrs. Cowan, you want it. Okay. So whereas the active adult center services provided in our community are a vital and essential part of our community or citizens' everyday lives, and whereas the physical, mental, and overall well-being of the 50-plus community is the main focus of the Active Adult Center and its staff, and whereas through a variety of offered programs, the age-50-plus citizens of the City of Madison Heights and its surrounding communities are enriched and supported in a myriad of ways that they would normally not be, and whereas in addition to providing programs, the Active Adult Center also provides and continually researches resources for seniors and provides emergency bags and resources for the city's homeless citizens, and whereas the Active Adult Center has actively participated in numerous city and county-wide events and partnered with various local and regional businesses and organizations, and whereas the quality and effectiveness of the center and the services provided, as well as their planning, design, and implementation, are vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of our Active Adult Center employees, and whereas the efficiency in qualified, passionate, and dedicated personnel who staff the Active Adult Center is directly influenced by and shines through the faces, attitudes, and well-being of the residents of the City of Madison Heights and its surrounding communities. Now therefore, it be resolved that the mayor and city council of the City of Madison Heights do hereby proclaim the month of September 2024, National Senior Center Month in the City of Madison Heights, and calls upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing and to recognize the contributions that our Active Adult Center employees make every day to the health, safety, and emotional well-being and quality of life of the Madison Heights 50-plus community and the area surrounding communities. So thank you to everyone who works there and who volunteers there, and give yourselves a big round of applause.
Hi, everyone. Thank you so much. We really appreciate this. From the start of senior centers in the 1940s to the Older Americans Act in 1976 until today, senior centers have evolved immensely, and it is because of the people that work there and the people that volunteer there and the people that go there, ever looking at what is needed in the community. And we have such a wonderful group. I'm so grateful for them. They are best way to put it, rock stars, each and every day, putting their heart into everything. So thank you so much, everybody, and thank you for honoring us.
Thank you for everything that you do. All right, and then last up for presentations, we have the one Mr. Muir requested, and that is Suicide Prevention Week. So whereas in 2022, the national suicide rate was 14.2 per 100,000, and the Michigan suicide rate was 14.6 per 100,000, with 1,494 Michigan residents dying by suicide, and whereas in 2022, Michigan firearm suicides accounted for 56.2% of suicide deaths, and whereas in 2022, suicide was the second-leading cause of death for Michigan residents aged 15 to 34, and whereas surviving family and friends not only suffer the trauma of losing a loved one to suicide, but are at higher risk themselves for attempting suicide, and whereas Michigan has established the 988 Suicide and Crisis Lifeline coverage statewide to provide an easy-to-remember way for people experiencing behavioral health-related distress, to access a strengthened and expanded network of crisis call centers, and whereas the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services and local suicide prevention organizations and coalitions have been working tirelessly to prevent suicide and provide support to residents impacted by a suicide death in Michigan, and whereas Michigan's federally-funded Transforming Youth Suicide Prevention Program and Preventing Suicide in Michigan Men Program are committed to lowering suicide rate among youth, young adults, and adult men by creating true, sustainable change in both state and local systems, and whereas Michigan can reduce its suicide rate by employing best practices, supporting community involvement, and encouraging seeking help through open, direct, and honest talk about suicide. Now therefore, the City Council does hereby resolve the week of September 8th to 14th, 2024, as Suicide Prevention Week in the City of Madison Heights, and call upon our citizens and interested groups to observe this week with appropriate activities that promote awareness that there is hope. Suicide is preventable, and mental illness is treatable. So just want to remind everybody that you are not alone, and that there is always someone listening. There is always hope, and whatever you're going through, you can get through it, and if you need the support to get through it, make the call. So, Mr. Muir, is there anything that you wanted to say in addition?
Yeah, hats off to the Madison Heights Community Coalition, who has lots of material and information on training. Reach out to them if you're...if you need help in understanding how to help someone who may be thinking suicide, and there's lots of online training that they can get hooked up with. It starts with us. We've got to be there to listen. We've got to understand when people are struggling and help them and encourage them to reach out for help. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, that is it for our presentations, and we are going to move to meeting open to the public. So this is the opportunity, if anyone from the public wishes to speak, I ask that you take the podium, give your name, address, any affiliation with the city. Rest your comments to me. You've got three minutes, and with that...
Can I go ahead and talk now?
Absolutely.
Now, I've heard since I got here, my name is Paul Sanders. I live at 26433 Ryalto Street in Madison Heights, just south of 11 Mile Road. I've lived here since 1979. I haven't seen anything in print or writing until I read this in the paper, that you want to take 11 Mile down from four lanes to three. Did we get to vote on that? No. You decided this stuff, and Mark Bliss was the only one to say, hey, wait a minute, let's hold up a bit. I think, since I live here, and I've lived here for years and years, and I'm an old guy, why don't we get to vote on what you're going to do on 11 Mile Road? We, the people, the people that I go to lunch with and talk with at the different restaurants around, they would like it to stay the way it is. Now, you people already voted on it. That's not what the people that live here would like. If you go ahead and complete pushing this through, I'm sorry. There's a lot of people don't want that. And I believe there was a great song, an actor, whose daughter said, "These boots were made for walking." And I think maybe you folks ought to think about talking with the people about what you're going to do on 11, or possibly, your boots will have to walk and find a job that you might actually run for and get elected for. Thank you, bye-bye.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak this evening?
My name is Dolores Maury. I live at 30511 Blair Moore Drive. I'm not here to complain about anything. I'm here to honor our fire department. They are absolutely marvelous. They have come to my rescue. On July 5th, I had an issue where I didn't know if I was going to make it. I really thought Jesus was coming down to get me. And because of Charles, Charlie, and I think his name was either Dylan or...I can't remember the other man's name, they came into my home. They treated me with total respect, concern, and appreciation that my family was smart enough to call them. As he was taking my vitals, I started throwing up. And Charles, Charlie, she said, "This isn't common. We need to get her to the hospital." They put me in the ambulance and let my son go upstairs and get dressed, because it's 1:30 in the morning. He's in his night clothes, you know. They let him go up and get dressed, and said to her to have a face that she would recognize, because I didn't know the wonderful men that were there, "We would like you to be in the ambulance with us." So we did that, and Steve stayed with me through the whole night. And after they got done with their paperwork, the fire people, when they got done with their paperwork, they come back to the room I was in and said, "Good luck with your mother, and she will be being thought of the whole time." They did not have to come back and do that. That's just the way they are. So I'm praising them tonight, honoring them totally. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Absolutely, our fire department deserves a round of applause. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak this evening?
It's kind of a hot week tonight, isn't it? My name's Clut LeClaire, and I live at 30200 Brush, and of course, Madison Heights. All right. I just want to bring up an issue for a topic of discussion. A few years ago, the residents of Madison Heights were able to use the Warren Rec Center, and especially the pool area. Wonderful resource. Don't know really what happened with that. I did call the Rec Center probably about six, eight months ago, and I've talked to you about it before, Mayor. For some reason, we're no longer able to go over there. The residents of Sterling Heights and also Centerline are able to use that resource. It's a beautiful place, especially the pool. And for myself, I really enjoyed the water aerobics class, and I currently have some medical issues that they highly recommended you going back and using the water aerobics over there for physical therapy reasons, and of course, being on a limited income, that being a senior citizen, and we just talked about the resources we have here in Madison Heights for seniors, but unfortunately, that doesn't include the pool over there and what they have. They have other resources that the Senior Center does have here, but that's something that I would like the City Council to look into. This is something that is a benefit for us being here in Madison Heights. I don't know if there is a payment that had to be made from the City to Warren to use the facilities and so on and so forth. I know that we had to pay as an individual going in there to use it. So bringing that topic up, I would...first of all, is this a practice forum for that, for somebody to...
Yeah, it's fine. It is something that we're looking into.
Okay, and who is going to take leadership of that, to look into it?
Melissa Marsh, our city manager, will be able to follow up on that.
Okay, and when can we look for a reply back, then?
Well, I'll contact him tomorrow, but I'm not sure how long it'll be to get to the right person there.
So if I come back at the next City Council meeting, and then we'll have some sort of update from you at that point?
Yeah, if you give me your information, I'll contact you.
Yeah.
Okay.
You can...
No, no.
You can just give it to Sean. Don't say it in the microphone there.
If you give it to him.
I just said it earlier, but I...
If you...I think I have your number, but just in case I can't find it. If you want to write down your name and phone number...
Okay.
And just so you're not making it public, and then, no, give her a bit of time. She's not going to have an answer for you tomorrow.
I understand, understand. Okay, okay, great. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, and thank you for following up.
Yeah, thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Okay, all right, then I'm going to close public comments, and we're going to move on to our consent agenda. There are three items. We have the special meeting minutes and the regular meeting minutes from August 12th, and then we have the Director of Public Services, a scheduled replacement of vehicle, number 121. Can I please get a motion to approve?
Your Honor, motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor, support.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those against say no. Motion carries. And then we have reports, first up, from the police chief, the human trafficking task force, interlocal agreement.
Due to the success the Madison Heights Special Investigations Unit has had in addressing human trafficking and the relationship we have developed with the Oakland County Prosecutor's Office... Office, we were approached about partnering with the Oakland County Sheriff's Office for a joint agency task force. Under the attached interlocal agreement, Oakland County Sheriff's Office will provide personnel to staff a task force and for day-to-day operations out of the Madison Huts Police Department. We will provide office space, limited office equipment, and our SIU will train the Oakland County Task Force personnel to be independent. Staff and the Assistant City Attorney have reviewed the attached local agreement and recommend approval of the Human Trafficking Task Force Agreement between the Oakland County Sheriff's Department and the City of Madison Heights, authorizing the mayor to sign on behalf of the city.
All right, thank you. What is the wish of council?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that council approves the interlocal agreement with Oakland County Sheriff's Office to participate in Oakland County Human Trafficking Task Force and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement on behalf of the city.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor?
Yes.
Support.
Thank you. Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All right, seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against, say no. Motion carries. And then, next up, we have our boards and commission appointments. So, generally, what we do with this is, we just go through the boards alphabetically, and whoever is the council representative will make their appointments or their suggestions. So, gonna start with the As, start with the Active Adult Board.
Mr. Wright?
Can I get a motion?
Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion to nominate Marie Bessler for a term of three years, ending on August 31st, 2027, to the Active Adult Advisory Board.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor, I'll support.
Few motions been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against, say no. Motion carries. Next up, we have the other A, Arts Board.
Yes, Your Honor, I move that we reappoint Lori Gerald and Vida Palazolo and Sue Pop to terms that expire 8/31/27, and appoint Toya Aaron to a term that expires 8/31/26. At this time, I'd like to leave the alternates open, because we will be recruiting at Trail Tunes.
All right, is there support?
Your Honor?
Yes.
Support.
All right, thank you. Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against, say no. Motion carries. And then we have the Construction Board of Appeals. There is no council representative, representative for that, so can I please get a motion to reappoint Brad Rickel for a term ending August 2026?
Your Honor?
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor? Support.
All right, thank you. Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against, say no. Motion carries. Next up is Crime Commission. This is a mayor's appointment. I have talked to Councilman Fleming, and based on that conversation, I am going to ask for a motion to reappoint Martha Covert, Jeffrey Hilliard, and Anthony Roberts to regular terms expiring August 27. Can I please get a motion to approve that?
Your Honor?
Motion to confirm the mayor's appointment.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor, support.
All right, thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against, say no. Motion carries. And then we have, for the DDA, I would like an appointment of Jerry Hambright for a term ending on, the regular term ending on February, in February 2000, and, make it February 2027. Can I please get a motion to approve that?
Motion to approve or to concur with mayor's appointment.
Is there support?
Your Honor?
Yes.
Support.
Thank you. Motion hasn't been made and seconded. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. And then we have, for the Elected Officials Compensation Commission, again, there is no council representative, so I would just ask for a motion to appoint Angela Brunkey to, reappoint Angela Brunkey to the, to the board for position ending August 2031. A motion to support?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I'll make the motion to reappoint.
All right, thank you. Is, is there support?
Your Honor? Support.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against, say no. Motion carries. And then we have the Environmental Citizens Committee.
All right, I'm gonna make a motion to appoint Katerianna Studman to a regular term ending 2/28/27, and Kathy Ellison to an alternate term ending 2/28/27 as well.
All right, thank you. Can I get a motion to support, please?
Your Honor?
Yes.
Support.
All right, thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against, say no. Motion carries. And then we have the Police, Fire, General Retiree Pension Healthcare Trust Boards. Can I please get a motion to approve Jeff Gerald's? Hold on, what is the term for that? We're going to come back to that.
Yeah. I'll look it up. Sorry.
All right, we're gonna come back to that one. So, next up, we have Human Relations and Equity Commission. Can I get a motion for that?
Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Rebecca Chamberlain to a term of two years, ending on August 31st, 2026.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I'll support.
Few motions been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against, say no. Motion carries. And then, we have for the Library Advisory Board, can I get a motion for that, please?
Yes, Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion for three willing participants, starting at 8/31/2026. First one is Toya, or excuse me, Erin Toya. I'm sorry, Toya, Erin, Regina, Jessica...
Jessica Silva.
Where?
Jessica Silva.
Jessica Silva, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Jessica Silva.
Like, she, what she said.
Jessica Silva.
And then Christina Menzer. Menzer?
Menzer.
All right, is there support for these three appointments to August 26?
Your Honor?
Yes.
Support.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against, say no. Motion carries. Next up is Parks and Recreation. Now, this is Counselor Rohrbach, but it's a mayor's appointment. Has, has Chaz Bruski come to any meetings? Is there...
He has not attended any meetings in the last year, to my knowledge, so...
If you want, you do not have to make an, if you don't, you do not have to recommend an appointment?
I mean, I, I am, I'm not opposed to appointing him to this, to this spot. He is, has done quite a bit with helping with youth sports programs, and so it seems like a good fit for the Parks and Rec Advisory Board.
Okay, then, can I get the motion to approve the mayor's nominee of Chaz Bruski for the regular position expiring February 25?
Your Honor, can I recommend expiring in 2026, since...
This alternate?
Oh, it's an alternate. You're right. Your Honor, I concur with your appointment.
Okay, so, can I get support for the motion?
Your Honor?
Yes.
Support.
All right, thank you. Motion has been made, seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against, say no. Motion carries. Planning Commission is also a mayor's appointment, so I would like someone to please make the motion to confirm the mayor's appointment of Josh Champagne to a term, a regular term ending August 2027.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I'll make the motion to reaffirm the mayor's appointment, or I guess, reappointment of our fabulous chair, Josh Champagne.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I'll support.
All right, thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Your Honor, I'll just echo Mayor Protim's in a minute.
All right, thank you. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against, say no. Motion carries. And I would like to make a request of the clerk, if you could let the three other applicants know when our meetings are. You don't have to come to a board meeting in order to be appointed, but it's something that the DDA and I talked about a few years ago, that we really want to make sure that people were, were engaged and that they were actually going to participate and show up. And so, we do sort of interviews for people who want to be on the DDA. They need to come to a meeting, we need to talk to them and just make sure that, you know, it looks like they'd be a good fit. So, as far as I know, none of these three people have come to any of our meetings, so if you could just reach out to them and let them know when they are, when they are, and if they could come, and just, you know, we, we have public comment at our meetings, so anyone who wants to join one of the boards is welcome to come to a board and speak for their three minutes about why they'd like to join. So, with that, I'm gonna leave Planning Commission. And I'm gonna move to the Zoning Board of Appeals. Can I get a motion to reappoint Gloria Thompson to the alternate role expiring February 25, please?
Your Honor? Oh, sorry.
No, no, I'm sorry, there is no one on the board.
Oh, I'd like to make a...
Oh, oh, actually, no, there is. Who is zoning? Sorry?
Is it Sean?
Oh, it might be Sean.
Yes, okay. Well, then, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Dahlia Garmo to a term ending in 2025, February 2025. No?
Well, you do have an, an existing applicant that wants to be reappointed, but that's up to you.
For zoning?
So, Gloria Thompson?
Gloria Thompson as well?
So, she is, she wants to be reappointed to the alternate role, perhaps?
Gotcha.
Let me ask this question, not of Mr. Wright. Are, is ZBA making quorum?
Yes.
Okay, let's leave this one for now, because I believe that it's Councilman Fleming, and I'm just checking to see.
I was gonna say that the plan, man, asked that she, that that position be filled.
Okay, so Matt did ask that it be filled. Okay, so, our options are Gloria Thompson, who would like to be reappointed, and Dahlia Garmo, and I don't have enough information about either of them at this point in time, but there has been a request that it be filled.
Can I adjust my motion, or withdraw my motion and make a new motion?
Sure, 'cause it hasn't been seconded.
Great. I'd like to make a motion to appoint Gloria Thompson to an alternate term ending in February 28, 2025, to the Zoning Board of Appeals.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I'll second.
All right, thank you. Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against, say no. Motion carries. And then we are going to go back to the Police and Fire General Retiree Pension Healthcare Trust Board. If I can please get a motion to approve Jeff Gerald's, reappoint Jeff Gerald's to a position ending August 2030.
Your Honor, so moved.
Thank you. Motion's been made. Is there support?
Your Honor?
Support.
Thank you. Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against, say no. Motion carries. And that concludes our boards and appointments. And final item for this evening is the Fire Chief, the turnout gear purchase.
The Michigan Department of Labor and Economic Opportunity has awarded the fire department an $86,206 grant to assist in purchasing a second set of turnout gear for eligible firefighters. The grant will support the purchase of 23 sets of turnout gear over the next two fiscal years. The first phase of the grant will provide for 17 sets of turnout gear in the amount of $54,736.43. Staff and I recommend two motions. First, the city council waive the formal procurement process and accept the lowest qualified quote received from axes and irons through Sourcewell for the purchase of 17 sets of turnout gear in the amount of $54,736.43. And second, that the city council approve a budget amendment in the amount of $54,736.43 to account number 101336774.
All right, thank you. So, can I get a motion for the first part, please?
Your Honor?
Yes.
Motion.
Motion to approve?
Yes.
As stated by the...
I'll make that motion.
Motion to approve as stated by the city manager?
Yes.
All right, for motion number one, is there support?
Your Honor?
Yes.
Support.
All right, thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Your Honor?
Yes.
Just want to make sure I understand, so, we're gonna waive the procurement process, take the low bid, but this money is gonna be repaid to us, right?
Yes. It's a grant from the state. It's a reimbursement.
So, I'm okay with that. I just want to make sure I understood this. So, yes, my motion stands. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there any other discussion? All right, seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against, say no. Motion carries. And then the second part of this is that we do need to do a budget amendment, and in order for this to pass, we need to have five, five votes on the affirmative. So, can I get a motion to, to amend the budget for the amount of the $54,736.43?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that we amend the budget in the amount of $54,736.43 to account 1013367740000.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor?
Yes.
Support.
All right, thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Your Honor, we need a roll call.
All right, if there's no more discussion, clerk, can you please do a roll call?
Councilman Muir?
Yes.
Counselor Rohrbach?
Yes.
Councilman Soltes?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Bliss?
Yes.
And Mayor Grayson?
I vote yes. Motion carries, 6-0. And with that, I invite closing comments, starting with Councilman Muir.
Wow, a lot going on. So, a huge shout-out to our AAC folks and all the fantastic work that you guys do and gals. Love seeing all the activities going on up here. I saw it last Friday with the Veterans Event going on, and they were extremely well-attended. We were offered to join them for lunch, but we were afraid that we might be taking a sandwich away from a veteran, so City Manager Marsh and I passed on the lunch invite, unless she snuck over there after I left.
My house.
Oh, now I see how it's gonna go. All right. Speaking again on the DTE stuff that we talked about last meeting, we are getting together with them later this month to discuss some of the accomplishments, quote-unquote, that they have been making over the last few years and to talk more about what they have planned coming. So we are, we are looking into it. Just a reminder, DTE is struggling, just like every other company in the United States, with finding people to work. And if you noticed during the last outing, at least in my neighborhood, all the trucks were from LaCom out of Ohio, I think. So when there's a large outing like that, the electric companies help each other out. So DTE didn't have enough trucks to service our area. They're pulling people in from other areas. And they have a very strict order in which they do it in. Some of those videos have been posted on the city website about how DTE goes about it. And unfortunately, if you're in a neighborhood that only has four, or five, or six houses out, like just south of my house was, unfortunately, you're not very high on their list to get that going. They want to focus on hospitals and schools and that kind of stuff first. But we are working with them to see what they have planned and how we can mitigate some of these outages and look into a tree trimming program or some new equipment. Lots of exciting things going on this month in the city. Started out with the, well, first, the fall/winter brochure is out, so you should have gotten that in the mail. And registration opens today for that, so make sure you look through that. On September 1st, we had our police department versus fire department softball game. Police department won, although they may have used a ringer, but we're not going to, we're not going to mention Darren McCarty filling in for chief, but... Oh, wait, I just mentioned it, sorry. It was a great game, a good cause, and it was good to see people down at Rosie's Park down there. Everybody had a great time. The MML Conference is later, the MML Conference is later this week. Looking forward to learning and networking up there. Will be there the rest of the week with several of my other council folks. Unfortunately, I may not get back in time for Revin the Heights. It's put on the HREC on the 14th. We have a fire department open house, house at Station 1 on the 14th. The Crime Commission has Harco and his friends over at Rosie's Park on the 21st. Trail Tunes with the yard board is on the 21st. And oh, we've got this beautiful band shell that hopefully will be mostly finished for a ribbon cutting that night. Later this month, the code enforcement education program is going on from the Chamber on the 26th, so you can check that out. As Councilor Roebach said, yes, school is in session, so please watch out for children running all over the place because they don't often look when they're crossing the street, so please be careful with that. We're working on getting some more of those traffic signs up that we talked about a few meetings ago in some of the school zones to at least make you understand how fast you're going and make you think about it. So hopefully, we'll get those up. I'm sure I'm missing a ton of stuff, but it's really exciting time to be in Madison Heights in September. Just a special thanks again for the proclamation for the Suicide Prevention Week. And again, the Madison Heights Community Coalition has information for you if you'd like to learn more about how to help people deal with that. Thanks, Your Honor.
All right, thank you. Mr. Wess?
Yes, Your Honor. First and foremost, we have a pretty full house here tonight, and y'all stayed through the entire meeting. And it was obviously the most engaging meeting we've ever had. So, so, so much excitement. Who gets appointed to what board and when? And, you know, we're trying to pronounce names and stuff. It's super engaging. So thank you all for staying. It was certainly a pleasure to have this room filled. It's interesting because a lot of the stuff that is a challenge in our community, like the DTE issues that were mentioned, are not things that we have a lot of say over. Like, I wish, I wish that we had say over DTE. DTE is effectively a sanctioned monopoly. There's not a lot that we could do. About, I think, seven years ago, then Mayor Harwell and I had private meetings with them. We had them come to a council meeting and present. The number one issue back then was tree trimming. As branches fell, it was knocking out power at a pretty significant rate. As you heard from Councilman Muir, seven years later, that's still the number one cause, and we're hoping for a great plan from DTE to be able to get it done. So I say all that to say, you know, we're continuously involved in the dialogue, but if it were up to us, it would be improved already. So I highly recommend anytime that your power is out, even if it's just you, even if it's just for a flicker, submit tickets. They are following the data, and their algorithms are telling them where to go and what to do. So definitely take that opportunity and also take the opportunity to send messages to, you know, members of the state legislature. And, you know, there's a lot of governmental antitrust laws that they're exempt from. So I would highly recommend that our residents engage those that are in higher positions of authority than we are, because there's not a lot that we can do for things like DTE. I want to note, it was mentioned with Trail Tunes coming up, I'm rocking the Trail Tunes Festival t-shirt tonight. But one of the cool things that I think about this year's Trail Tunes is it's the very first time since the Arts Board was founded, like, six, seven years ago, that we have a few open slots. And so, you know, as was mentioned with Planning Commission, you know, I want to make sure that we get invites out to everybody that applied. And then we're going to be actively talking about those slots and hoping to engage the public, because not only would it be great to, you know, fill those slots, but I want to make sure that we've got a bench of volunteers, of people who want to be active, and bringing things like a little music festival that we cooked up in the middle of COVID to make sure that live music didn't die in our city. Things like that is why the, you know, boards and commissions, like the Arts Board, are so critical. And so, you know, if you're interested, please come out. I'm happy to help put you to work. We've got a lot of staffing needs for the Trail Tunes Festival and for a lot of our other programming. And then if you're just wanting to support the work of the Arts Board, Trail Tunes starts at 2:00 on the 21st, and it's starting with the grand opening and ribbon cutting of the band show. And what I think is really cool is, yeah, there's going to be a few speeches. I will keep mine as short as possible for you, I promise. But we are also going to have last year's Battle of the Bands winner christening that stage in style. They are an oldies, you know, classic rock band. They won the battle last year with a Bob Seger song, which I think anytime you play a Bob Seger song in Michigan, you're going to win a Battle of the Bands. So expect something great from them. That kicks off at 2:00. And then the entire festival, at any time, there's going to be five or six bands playing across the park, alternating sets. And that starts at 2:30 with that battle around 6:30 at night. So it's a long day. You can pop in, pop out, come and go. You can enjoy the food trucks while you're hanging out there and listening to some great music. So we'd love to see you there. And before then, is Revin in the Heights? I'm not going to, I'm not going to jump over you on that, but I do want to say that it's such a cool thing that Madison Heights, we have back-to-back weekends of programming, of community events, and I can't tell you the last time that that has happened. So really excited for that, and I encourage you to go to both events if you're free. Support the work of volunteers that are putting on both of these events. And yeah, please, join a board if you have the time. We'd love to have you. That's it, Your Honor.
All right, thank you. Mr. Wright?
I will again echo the sentiments of our Mayor Pro Tem. It's like I'm taking his words today, because I agree with him. We are, the Human Relations and Equity Commission has some open seats, and we would love to have everyone's voice, who wants to get involved, who wants to be a part of putting things on and being a part of making change in the city. We invite you to be a part. Revin in the Heights is this Saturday, is going to be from 10:00 to 3:00. And I encourage you guys to all come out and check out the cool cars. We got some dragsters coming out. We got some classic cars coming out. We potentially have some electric vehicles coming out, so it should be quite the show. And if we don't have enough cars coming out, you'll get to see my beautiful vehicle shined up. But it should be a good event. We got a few folks signed up. We have a few food trucks. We have the Taco Hub coming out. Big Bo's is coming out. We have a dessert truck. I've been told that the police department is going to bring out the Diplomat. If you don't know what that is, if you've ever seen the show called Hill Street Blues, it's that type of car. So we're going to have activities for the kids as well as a DJ. So it should be a fun event. And there will be awards for the cars, so along with the mayor's choice, a police chief's choice. It should be a fun event for the entire family. And the cool thing is this partner with the firehouse's open station. So we'll get to see a lot of cool vehicles, and we want to encourage you guys to come out, participate, bring your family out. One thing that was not mentioned, that these events are free. The food's not free, but the event itself is free. So I encourage you guys to come on out, come learn more about the boards, the Arts Board, the HREC, come learn how you can be a part of it. And I've had questions about if it's too late to register for the car show or the cooking competition. You can come the day of. We're going to have a barbecue competition. So what that means is you compete, you submit ribs, you submit chicken, and there will be awards for both. So awards and rewards, come on out and support. And if you want to learn more, go to our Facebook page, and you can learn more. There's a question, but I don't think I'm allowed to answer questions, but the mayor can, so... That, we're going to have some surprise judges for that part, so... But I encourage you all to come on out at least for a little while, check out the cool cars, check out the community, and, you know, come see a lot that's going to be out there for sights and to see, so... Lastly, I would just like to, on a personal note, I lost my dad a couple weeks back, and a lot of people supported me, called me, texted me, like, talked to me, sent flowers, and really got around my family and I. So I just want to thank the folks in the room who made it a point to talk to me, made it a point to, like, be there or, like, just to say, you know, condolences. So thank you all. It means a lot to my family and I, so...
Thank you. Mr. Sherman?
If anything, this council meeting demonstrated that the city of Madison Heights provides excellent activities for all of its residents, not just police and fire and seniors. My six-year-old grandson was playing soccer this weekend at Red Oaks Soccer Complex. So the city provides excellent, excellent activities, and I'm sure we all benefit from it.
Ms. Marsh? Anything in the clerk's office, CJ? Yes?
I just want to let everybody know that the clerk's office has tentatively scheduled September 27th for the initial mailing of our absentee ballots. So if you have already signed up to be a permanent ballot recipient of a permanent ballot, you should be getting your ballot in that mailing. If you have not requested an absentee ballot and you'd like to do so, you can do so online on the city's website. You can come into the city clerk's office, or you can go online to the Secretary of State's office. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Rambach?
Yeah, just a couple of things. First, I started a new job since our last meeting, and I just want to say I work a lot now with the police officers in the city of Detroit, and they've all volunteered to be special judges for Revin in the Heights barbecue competition. I just want you to know, I think it's not a job that you will have a hard time filling, so... I am very excited about that and looking forward to that and all the work that Mr. Wright has put into it. So much work has gone into this, and I just want to really recognize you for the incredible amount of work that you've done to make this happen and bring it to our city and, you know, bring it in with the HREC and everybody there, but you've taken on the lion's share of that work, and so thank you for that. I also want to mention that we have Environmental Citizens Committee worked together with the city, and over the, I think, September 1st, we had our first day of composting in the Heights. So if you have food waste that you are looking to compost and would like to not throw it into the trash and add to the landfill, you can bring it any day to DPS over on Ajax Road. They'll have a special container. You can just dump those, that food scraps right into that container, and it will be composted. It's a pilot program, so if you're interested in using it, use it a lot right now, so then we'll keep it. I know my mother had a chest, freezer chest down in her basement that was two-thirds full of food scraps that she'd been holding on to for some composting opportunity. She was very excited to get her freezer back this week, so... But I just really encourage everyone to do that, to start, you know, save your food scraps, keep in the freezer, bring them out once a week or whenever is convenient to you to the DPS, and we can make a big impact on our carbon footprint here in the city of Madison Heights. So, and I want to ask of the city, Mrs. Marsh, I wonder if we can do a couple of extra informational posts on maybe social media, things like that, about the three-lane plan for 11 Mile Road? I hear a lot of misinformation that is being flung around on social media about people who think that we're putting in 12 bike lanes and we're doing all this crazy stuff. It's better than that. It's not that. It's better than what you think it is. And I'm, we're excited about it because it's going to be a safer situation. There's going to be a turn lane. There are going to be spaces where people can cross more effectively. There's going to be more trees, tree-lined areas along the sides of the road that will make it more comfortable for pedestrians to walk from, from the, from the high school down towards Hellway or over to the, what's that restaurant? Woodpile, right in that area. That's, it's starting to be a place, right? We, we have talked about for decades about what's downtown Madison Heights, there's no such thing, right? And we haven't been able, we haven't had the investment dollars, we haven't had the ability to make that a real thing. And this is the first step to really moving us in a direction. It's not going to happen overnight, and it's not going to happen without some change that can make us a little nervous. But I think that this change is going to be a really positive thing for us, for the city of Madison Heights. I live right there. I live just north of 11 Mile. I live nearby. We're down in that area all the time. And we, we think, I think, and I think many of the people I've spoken to are excited about this, but I think having a little bit more of the truth information instead of the speculation out there would be really helpful for our residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Soltis?
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor. Mayor Pro Tem, you forgot that I was part of that, that when DTE came in, it was like a triangulation. You were there, Mayor, and then myself. In fact, I think, I heard later on that they said they would never come back again. So I don't know if that's a good or bad thing. Each year, we have this, the Suicide Prevention Proclamation. It hits homes with me because my father killed himself. And so it still affects even years and years later. So I just think we just need to, within your family, love one another, say you love each other, and talk more about what might be bothering you. Because it's a very tragic thing to have. And so it's post-traumatic with my father, I think. He was a veteran. But it could, it could be a whole list of reasons why. But I think just keep, keep each other together and love one another, and that's all. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Yeah, tonight was really just an interesting meeting, and it was a mixture of life as it is. There were a lot of celebrations. We had a lot, we have a lot of beautiful homes and gardens in the city and people who really take pride in where they live and they want to be part of the community, whether it's their gardeners, the volunteers, you know, ours, our volunteers and our staff of our senior center, you know, came out in full force. And yeah, it's, they stayed for the whole meeting, which was great, but then we also had, you know, we started on a sad note, a happy sad note. Hey, we're back in school, which is great, but hey, a bunch of kids went to school and they didn't make it home. You know, that is a sad commentary. I remember when my children started school and the teacher said, "My job is keeping them safe." And I thought, from what, falling off a desk? That's ridiculous. The kids don't, you don't need to worry about keeping the kids safe. And yeah, they do. That is their job, and it's probably not what any of them really wanted to do when they thought they wanted to be a teacher. So we need to keep our kids safe. And then we had the proclamation for suicide, and Councilman Soltis has always been very public about his father. I've also been public about my father. My father was bipolar, and, you know, he did not lose his life to suicide. But he had some very tough times, and he was able to get help. Not everybody is. And as a child who grew up in that environment, especially 30, 40 years ago, when you do not talk about that kind of thing, you know, you carry it with you. You carry it with you. And I remember when my kids were born, and I would check on them, and talking to the nurse, and she said, "You check on your kids so often because of your childhood, because you would be scared that you would get home from school and your father wouldn't be sleeping." So it's just one of those things that I'm, I mean, I don't remember this, but, you know, these things, they stay with you. So good things, bad things. Just remember to tell the people that you care about, that you care about them. Tomorrow is never promised. And to Councilor Roebach's comment about social media, don't believe what you see on social media. Like, just, and it's not just about 11 Mile. It's about 11 Mile, and it's about DTE, and it's about pretty much anything. We've had several meetings talking about 11 Mile. We've had public forums where we have invited people to come and to, you know, voice their concerns. You know, I think this is a great idea. Can we do that? And if people aren't voicing their concerns, which happens so often until after we vote, there's not a lot we can do. There's not a lot we can do. We don't come up with ideas and say, you know what, we should do this, and then vote on it the next day. We put a lot of thought into it. Staff spends a lot of time. And we do talk to people. We do ask, and I don't know how to get the information out to people any more than we do. So just take everything you read online with a grain of salt. Our next meeting is going to be on the 23rd, I believe. Our next meeting is the 23rd of September. The time is 8:00.